All these counties have legislators that should have forums. Nothing else, maybe we can make up our own public get-togethers, say, hey, come on down, bring your potluck, lunch with you and all that stuff. It's very easy to turn down the person you don't know. If Don wants something done, all he's got to do is go to Dan or Wanda and all those, say, here, this is what we've done. They can't do it by themselves. So if John makes a comment and you've heard it, pass it on. Communication is the only way we're going to change this. We could turn around and sit here and whine about it, which isn't the proper word to say, but we're not going to go any farther than where we're already at. Go out and tell people, we just did a deal with Bonhom County with our emergency management. Let's go over Bonhom County, Hutchinson County, Turner County, Clay County. That's all getting involved. That's basically what we've got to do is get the people back involved in the political process. You know, a lot of people think, well, I voted, so I've done my job. That's not just your job. Your job is to make the people you voted for do what you want to do, or I shouldn't say that, inform them what your problem is and what you want them to do. We've got a newspaper with an editorial page that would love to have people send in letters to the editor, make a comment. You know, as I mentioned to you guys earlier this year, we used to have a commissioner would turn around and put an editorial in the paper telling them what the county commission was up to. That's just an example of what I'm talking about, communications. There's a few radio stations in our town. Let's see how many of them want on-the-spot interviews with the people, not just, but with the public. We've got a problem. Obviously, you've already, show us what it is. I'm not the world's smartest, but there might be somebody out there who's got a better idea than what I've got that can move us down the road. Just sitting still with our, on our hands is not going to do us any good. Get the word out to the public, talk to them, and once they get tired of it, talk to them some more. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Randy, Lynette, you guys want to come up, say something? Deb?
No one wants to come up for public comment? I'll close public comment at this time.
Can I guess, can I ask, like, the public, since you guys are here, a question? I mean, I, Jeff, really, the way to balance the budget is reduce costs or increase revenue, that's really our only option, one or the other? I mean, do you guys have, I mean, do you want to see more cuts? Or do you want to see increased revenue?
Higher taxes.
I mean, because that's, that's the only two options that are, I mean.
Well, taxes can't go up.
Well, I mean, I mean, like, he said an opt-out. I mean, I don't, that's really our only options, I see. Hello?
Lynette Al Glisterville. Just a couple of questions. According to the budget, there's $500,000 that is budgeted for the commission for what?
Contingency.
Contingency.
Yeah.
What does that entail is my one question?
That's for, at the end of the year, if departments are minus or in the red on their budget.
Is your microphone on?
And didn't we use that, like, was it last year, that big $130,000 air conditioner that we didn't budget for went out?
Bond insurance.
And we had no money, and I guess that's, those are the kind of things?
But that transfer, that goes into their budget, so they're not in the red by the end of the year.
So that's not just for the?
No.
The board?
It's not a slush fund for the board, no.
No.
And another question, well, it's a comment, as far as, for the, we're Yankton County, so anything that does not pertain to the whole county, why should we be funding it? If it doesn't benefit the Lesterville community, or the Irene community, or the Gayville community, why are we funding it? Everybody in the, in the county should be funded.
Can you, can you give us an example of what that might be?
Well, I'm not supposed to mention names. That was in the rules that you had set.
How about, how about department?
It's not a department. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's money that's given to particular entities within the community that do not necessarily fund the whole, or does not necessarily benefit the whole county.
And so what, what we do, I think, is, is we, as, as these organizations, I'm going to talk about Boys and Girls' Club, I'm going to talk about 4H, and I'm going to talk, those kind of thing, that's what you're referring to, right?
Well, 4H benefits the whole county.
Well, there's 23,000 people in, in the county.
It can benefit the whole county.
Okay, so then it's the mountain benefit, because we have to do that. We can say the Boys and Girls' Club benefits the whole county. And it does, because it provides a place for those people that are working, I'd say working, because lots of people in town don't want to work, but it provides a place for their kids to be, where they can earn a, a living and pay taxes and spend money to help keep businesses open. If you, if you measure the impact.
But then why are we funding Boys and Girls' Clubs that have values that do not reflect everybody in this community?
What are they? What are those values that don't reflect?
Maybe moral values?
I'd like to, I'd like to know, because I was on that board for six or eight years or 10 years, and Nancy Wonandi has been on that board. What are, what are some of the things that they're failing to do?
Like supporting?
And that's not the question here today for what they're not doing or what someone else is doing. We're talking about budget items and issues, and if, if there's a, a group or a nonprofit organization that you feel we should not be funding, then I guess if you don't want to mention it today here, you can let me know, or Don know, or Dan know, or Wanda, or Ryan know what they are. And our, the process for us deciding what funds, organizations we're going to fund or donate to, make donations to, is you come into the beginning, at a beginning of our budget process, you come in with your group and you do a presentation, and then we will decide if we want to move forward with that donation or not. That's kind of the process that, that we follow, so.
Good boy.
Thank you.
Anything, anything else?
Yeah, and Nancy, just, because we're not funding Thrive this year, correct?
Correct.
Correct, so.
You paid your budget.
So, so the amount in the budget is zero from the county for Thrive this year, so. Bob, Bob, Randy, anybody else? You know, we, we're going to need some public input, I guess. Is there a show of hands? Is there, you know, is, do people want more cuts? Or do people want, would people support something like a road and bridge opt-out? Is there anybody who wants to do that?
Or, 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 you know, those are basically, I think, a couple of, the only options we have is opt-out, or opening up, opening up for economic development in places that, that our ordinance won't allow it right now, so.
And, and I guess I don't know if that is gonna, I don't think we can grow our way out of this, but that's probably a separate subject. I, I would think a road and bridge opt-out might be an option, but we, you know, that's something we need feedback from.
Okay, no, no more public comments. At this point, I guess I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Well, do you want to just have some commission discussion and might have a more, a couple more questions for Jeff, I guess?
Okay. Well, I don't get a motion yet, so if you got more discussion, let's.
So again, to you, Jeff, I mean, reviewing our budget, I think we all agree that we can't, in the long term at least, afford the budget that's in front of us. And I guess our, our options is to do nothing in which we will go off a financial cliff this time next year. Is that, is that accurate to say?
Well, I wouldn't make, yeah, it's going to be.
Yeah.
Maybe two years.
Yeah.
Well, I mean. So, so in two years, it's going to be, you know?
Well, yeah, it doesn't have to be that. That's why I'm saying, that's why you're having discussion now.
But not making, not making changes?
Yes.
And continuing on the path that, that's where it will be?
I think you need to make changes in the budgets as you go here to minimize that, to stop that from happening.
So we need to make.
And the, the things, I talked about the revenues and stuff like that, those have to be legislative, legislated, and you're talking years. That you're talking, your, your solutions have to be more, a little more imminent than that, that you may change some things, cut some things, maybe work on an opt-out, whatever, whatever it is. If that doesn't happen, then you deal with what you have.
So I'll, I'll make a statement like I made a few meetings back, is Yankton County's been in existence for 100 years or more. Okay, I'm, I, I can almost guarantee that we've been in this situation within the last 100 years, the same situation we're in now today. People have worked their way through it. We may not be able to grow ourselves through this issue, but we need to work as commissioners and as citizens, we need to work harder and smarter to make sure that we don't get ourselves in this position any deeper, and that we move forward and get ourselves out of this condition. And the only way we're going to do that is if we all work together and, and, and make cuts where we can make cuts, and go down the road and make sure things get better. I mean, we, we, we've got a budget that's proposed that's going to work. Sure, can we cut 30, $40,000 out of there? Mike's already cut almost $2 million out of his budget for the highway department, which only means that some of the roads aren't going to get resurfaced or, or fixed that, that we were planning on doing this year. You know, yeah, we could take, we could take $30,000 out of the sheriff's budget, that means that he's going to have to get rid of one deputy, which means there's going to be less miles covered by our safety, by the sheriff's department. So we just got to work harder and smarter and figure this thing out, and make sure that we get the, make the right cuts at the right time and the right place.
Well, we can also perhaps move some of that money to a higher interest rate, rather than just watch it not earn money.
What is the interest rate that you're getting on there?
Well, on some of the money, we're getting .05%, which is appalling.
Yes. I, I think you should look into that.
I have, several times.
Ryan, at the last meeting, you said you had some budget proposals, did you not?
I, I would only, I only added, I already sent those to Patty, the, the new budget for extension.
Extension, I've got Poppin's.
No, I mean, I thought you had some budget, on the whole budget, is it just the?
Um, you know, the fact is, is there's no, there's no single solution here. Not, we're not going to have one thing that's just going to save us from this. We have to, we have to cut the budget in order to slow the dissent here. We don't want to hit that wall, because that wall's going to be harsh. Maybe, maybe we might still hit that wall, and let's try to get it down to a speed bump. I think, you know, it's going to be a combination of lots of things. We need better interest on the money. We need to make budget cuts where we can. We need to cut out, possibly cut out things that we do not need to fund. And as I says, like, we need to really consider what is a really county-wide service that is really, should be our responsibility? And what can be possibly, hey, some of these, some of these things that we are sending money to possibly can find other sources, private donors and so forth, and we don't have to pick up all the bill. So it's going to be a combination of a lot of things there. And then lastly is, yes, I think we have to really consider the, the road budget here and, and then opt-out possibly, because when I look at the history of our bridge, bridge and road fund and our bridge and road taxes, that's been pretty static through the years. It's not really been growing. The revenues there have not been growing, not by much, and the costs have increased massively. And so I think when you look at those two things, that's, that's probably one of the big things that we really need to probably put on the agenda to discuss on a very serious note. And I think that requires possibly an agenda item on a meeting where the public can comment directly on that matter.
I'd agree that I think the time has come, we got to do, we got to be specific, because we approved the final budget, is it October, when was our meeting?
September 16th.
September 16th is our final budget.
It has to be approved by October 1st.
So, I mean, I think we got to get something real soon here, and, and we're, we're kind of talking in generalities, but I think we need to, you know, be real specific. And I, I don't know about you, Jeff, but if we could, you know, we're, we're $4 million over, if we could cut that to $2 million or, or $3 million, then we have more time in the next few years to, to do this, right? I mean, like you said, you kind of feather it out, and, and then we have more time. And what's your thought on that? I mean, just not doing anything this year is going to put us in serious trouble next year?
The, the one thing that, that I've picked up from Jeff and, and from the meeting, though, is, is, is we're actually cutting more expenses out for this year, which will allow us to do a better job on the transfer, not transferring as much money funding to the highway department, not transferring as much money to the emergency management fund. So if we're going to make, we're making some cuts already to start the process. And like I said, if, if we cut, and we already cut $2 million off the highway department, we, Mike and I have talked about doing another million off of there, you know, so if we get, if, if we don't transfer $1 million and we cut another million off of the next year's budget, that's, we should be down to that $2 million range or whatever, so we're only going to lose $900,000 this year. And then we've got more opportunity to work on more for future years. And like I said, we've, we've, we're going to make this work. It's not like we're just going to, just because we, we don't change the budget for next year doesn't mean that two years from now, Yankton County's not going to exist.
No, and you've asked me these, some of these questions that are related to your financial situation, and I can respond to that, but ultimately, the finance, the responsibility for all of this is sitting right here. This is all on you. That I don't have any, I have no, I have no say in it. If you have a question, I can answer it, I sure will. Some of the stuff we've asked are, is beyond me.
The only, the only thing I would add to what you just said is that we, us five, have to follow state ordinances and state rules. If they say we have to pay for interpreters, we got to pay for interpreters.
Yes, you do.
Yep.
So.
Jeff, what are you, how familiar are you with, like, discretionary formulas? Do you deal with those?
You mean as far as, like, with the schools and stuff like that?
No, I mean, that's a conversation I have had briefly with Michelle, is, you know, we offer on commercial and, you know, agricultural structures, zero, 20, 40, 60, 80, 100. And according to some information that was put out, is we have $21 million of property that's not being fully assessed due to the discretionary formula. And what is anybody's thoughts on, you know, instead of a 20, 40, 60, 80, 100, doing maybe like a 20, 50, 100, and 100, and then we would, we would be collecting full property tax sooner? I mean, is that, I, I don't think it's going to amount to a huge amount, but even a few hundred thousand dollars at this point is going to help. And it's not, it's not an additional road and bridge, is that, is there any, do we want to look at that further?
I would, I would say that this meeting wasn't designed to do that, but we need to have another meeting before the 16th to establish what we want to do.
Everybody bring their suggestions, or?
Yep. Anything else?
Well, I, I want to say, it, it seems like I and, and maybe others of us up here are blaming the state for the problems. It isn't just their problem. We're part of a state that, that has done pretty good things, and I'm darn glad they got $68 million of reserves that they can do things with. But economic development is, is the, is the true only way that we'll probably work ourselves out of this without severe cuts. And that takes time. You got to get people, you got to have housing, you got to do the whole, whole process, and, and I think we've been working on that and, and doing a good job of it. So state, I'm.
We're not beating you up right now, so. Well, I, I guess I'd like to say thank you guys for all coming in and reviewing this with us, and know that we're, we're all in this together, and we need your input on it, you know, we, why would you ever cut anything if you don't have to? But I think the reality is, is it's got to be a combination of, of revenue and expense reduction, and that's where we need your advice and your input on how we can do this together, because, you know, we work for you, right? And this is not our budget, it's all of our budget. And, and so we need, we need public input, and we need, we need your advice.
Well, we don't want to cut any revenue.
Yeah, we don't, no, increase revenue, cut expenses if we can, yeah.
Okay, and I could take this opportunity to thank Jeff for coming down and, and working with us, and making sure that we all understand the budget system better. Okay?
John, can I make a comment?
Just as well.
Lauren Nelson, State Senate for District 18. And, and one thing I would say to you, I agree with you with public input. You know, if you don't know, September 23rd, we're having a special session to vote on a $650 million prison, new state prison. And the thing about is, a lot of people don't know, that's going to cost us an additional $30 million a year to run, on top of what we're paying already. So when you're talking about the $64 million left over from last year, you got to think about this, though, only $16 million is actually our money. The rest of it is unclaimed property that's counted as surplus. So actually, we only had $16 million that was actually ours, the rest was unclaimed property. So, and, and your frustration too is, is the fact that, you know, I haven't received any, very few emails, I'll say few emails, about that, how people feel about that. I have gone out and talked to people, I stop at Wakanda, I stop at Mayfield and, and such to, to get input, but, you know, we real, I, I do appreciate emails, I do appreciate phone calls, text messages, because it makes my job easier, and that's the thing with these people up here as your commission, when you give input, it makes their jobs easier, because they get that, that direction from you and what you're thinking and what you're, you're feeling. Just a couple of things that I wrote down, listening to this, is one thing, I've only been in peer for one session. One thing I already know, it is so easy to put legislation in place, laws in place. It is so hard to get rid of them. Perfect example, SB 73, spent two hours talking to Deb this morning about that, juvenile justice. One bill, but it, we just can't, the thing about it with that is you just can't just go and omit it. Just say, well, it was put in with one false whoop, we'll just get rid of it with one false whoop. Doesn't work, does it? It doesn't. And that's the problem, is once legislation's put into, into place, it is so hard to take it out, because it is entrenched in our state government. And so what we have to do, and again, I, I spent Wednesday, two hours Wednesday talking to the state's attorney, I spent another two hours this morning talking to our state's attorney, I'm going to, I have a meeting at 3 o'clock talking about, again, about justice. We have decided that in order to get something done, we're just going to have to take, just little pieces. You got this big kahuna that we have to fix, we're going to have to take little pieces each year, because again, it's so entrenched in government, and it's, it's hard to, to get rid of. You talk about unfunded mandates, did those all happen in one session? All these unfunded mandates you're talking about, did that happen in one session?
It feels like it sometimes.
It does. No, it took years, didn't it? It took years. And the thing about it is it's going to take years to get rid of those. I've met with Dan and exchanged emails, and, you know, one of the things we talk about is we're working on juvenile justice. June primary 2024, we've got a lot of new legislators in this year, and we are looking at juvenile justice and how we can take that burden off our counties, because we realize it. And, and Dan gave me some other suggestions, I'm working on some of those, because we do. The problem is, is the state's got their own little pocket of money that they don't want to give up. And when you, as a county, say, you know, we want the state to take over the funding of this, states got their areas they want to fund, but it's going to take a, a group of us legislators to say, hey, no. No more funding this at the state level, let's use that money for our counties, or giving that to our counties. Yeah, one thing I was going to say too, is, and one thing we discussed this morning, COVID money, you know, did two things. One, it gave us money at the local level, so we could use our property taxes for other things, but it also caused inflation, huge inflation. Our, our, you know, expenses, how, you know, groceries, everything we pay for, farming, machinery, everything has gone up. And the thing about it is now that we're getting back to reality, you know, everything's going down except the expenses. They're still up there. And it's, it's, you know, it's reality check, and yeah, that's going to be, have to be, have some hard decisions that are going to have to come forward, not just at the county level, but also at the state level. There's going to be, have to be some hard choices that have to be made. I think that's all I have.
Lauren, I.
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
Would you go back to the 68 million? You said only 16 million of it was eligible. So my question is, I bet if we go up to the population, I've heard it dozens of times that we had $68 million budget balance. Well, that's, you're telling me that's not true. So why does the press not dig into things and find out what the hell the truth is?
Because 68 million makes it sound like the state is swimming in money.
But, but Larry Roden is the one that first left that note, that message out, saying that he's so proud that the state has a $63 million reserve. Now, I just read on Searchlight or Dakota Scout or one of them, that that $63 million brings it up to $492 million that the state has in reserve.
Unclaimed.
I don't, I don't think the unclaimed properties is that much. $490 million?
Yeah, unclaimed property is quite huge. We have unclaimed, we have a huge pile.
How big?
I got a question too.
Sure.
Senator, thank you for being here.
Yeah, no problem, no problem.
When, when the state legislator proposes a bill that uses state fund, it has to go to appropriations and determine how it's paid for. But when they pass something on to local government, it just goes on, so, some sort of rule or law that when a mandate or whatnot is passed on, it should go still to appropriations on how to pay for it, because we just get this dropped on our lap, and there's no thought on how to do it. You know, like Senate Bill 73 is a great example. The state had juvenile delinquents for, it was well over 100 years that it was their responsible, their, their responsibility, until it got expensive, it was dumped on our backs, no, no thought on how it was ever funded. And now we just have to pick up, well, actually, we all pick up the pace on property tax. So I guess that would be a request of mine, when that is dealt with local governments, it should, there should be. When that is dealt with local governments, it should, there should be thought on how it's gonna be paid for. Because there's not, cause it is, it is when it's state money, but not when it's local government.
Yep, no, I agree. One of the things that we talked about this year is the fact that, and, is the fact that, cause just a little background note, if you have a bill that it's going to require some type of state money expenditure, you have to do a fiscal note. LRC has to do a fiscal note. So, I had a, a bill dealing with kilowatt-hours with wind turbines going from a hundred kilowatts oversight by the PUC to fifty or megawatts. And I had to go to LRC to have an, a fiscal note done to say how much, if, if we did that, how much would it cost the state, meaning PUC lawyers? You know, or the PUC department to have to fund to, to, to do this new, you know, legisla, uh, if this bill was passed, how much would it cost the state? And that's one thing that, that we have kicked around is the fact that any time you have a bill, any, you know, cause one thing they're talking about is with the felony charges. How much is that gonna cost the state if we're gonna incarcerate more people? And so, one of the things that's being talked about is, yeah, is anything, anything that's gonna require any type of state money or additional state money, that there has to be some type of fiscal note attached to it. Because that would help us. Cause if we had a bill that says, hey, X, Y, and Z, the state is gonna require the counties to do this, just with words, you're looking at, go, oh, this seems like maybe a good idea. But once you put a fiscal note on that and it says, boy, it's gonna cost the counties an additional, you know, ten million, hundred million, whatever, that gives it a different flavor. Because we know who's gonna pay for that. The taxpayers. It's gonna come back on them. So, anytime you, money talks, you know? And anytime you put some dollar amount on something, it, it kinda wakes people up, makes them aware of what's going on.
Last, last request.
Sure.
And, and, you know, Yankton County, we record all our meetings on YouTube. It'd be a request of mine. I wish the state would do the same. You, you certainly have the ability to do that. I know you voice-record most of them, not the summer study the breakout sessions have. But I, I would urge in the spirit of open government that the state start video recording its meetings for the public. So, that'd be a request.
No, I, I agree. And we, we are blessed here in Yankton County. Hope we, we realize this, is the fact that I can, on my way home from my last meeting in Pierre, I sat and watched the led, you know, your county commission meeting. We are blessed. There are counties that aren't, their, their, their meetings are not recorded at all. And they meet at eight-thirty every Tuesday morning. Or nine o'clock every Tuesday morning. And I just found out last night talking to somebody, one o'clock the third Thursday of the month. Once a month they meet at one o'clock. And so, we are really blessed. And that's really opened my eyes, working with some of these other counties when they have their county commission meetings. We're, we're blessed here to be able to have the access that we do to your meetings. And I, I do agree, I find it frustrating that to go back and look at session, you can only listen to it, you can't see the recordings. So, I'll write that down, see what happens. But again, it's gonna cost money.
It's worth it. It's, it's always worth it for transparency.
Yeah, it is. Very much so, it's worth it. If it's, if it means that the taxpayers and the people of South Dakota has better access of, and understanding of what's going on, it's worth it.
I'm gonna just correct you on, it doesn't cost that much money. It does take a little bit of discipline though. And it doesn't, but it won't cost that much money.
Worth every penny in my opinion.
And it's worth everything.
But it's state government, it's gonna cost a lot, don't you know that?
And, and it goes to also not just the meetings, but like even some of these committee meetings or something like that, when you're discussing some of these laws and even rules and stuff like that, it's, it would be such a benefit to be able to, as a citizen, to be able to participate in remotely. Because, yeah, there's been several cases where I've had to drive to Pierre just to argue a rule here or there for things. And it's, you know, it's takes my whole day, so.
Yeah, cause the, the summer I've been very frustrated with the Property Tax Task Force that has been meeting. And then once they get, their whole group gets done meeting, then they break out into three different groups, the, the county, the school, and then the state funding. And those are not recorded, they're not even audio recorded. And so, I gotta call somebody and say, hey, what did you discuss? And of course, it's secondhand, so you wonder, you know, did they leave something out or did they add something? So, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Last chance for public comment. Randy, come on up, Randy.
I just got a question.
And flip that, flip that switch on the microphone there, I can do it for you. There you go.
Randy Fring, I guess maybe misunderstanding on my part. Now, this is all there was for the meeting. You're not gonna go through anything? Okay. That was a misunderstanding on my part. Do you have questions? You know why I'm here, so. Do you have questions about 4-H? We need to answer before you break out.
No, I get, the only thing I think that would be real positive is when we do hire the, the new person, SDSU. Have them come in for quarterly reports every, every three months and update us on what's going on. And then we'd really appreciate you guys coming in from time to time and, and tell us all the great things you're doing. I, I know you guys are doing good things. And I think that would open up communication and, and I think that'd be a huge positive.
Didn't Amy have your quarterly reports?
No.
She, she didn't, you know, not, not all the departments do. But I, I know the, the ambulance and the sheriff do a great job of doing that. And then some of them do, some don't. But I, I think that would be a great thing, not only for us, but it's broadcasted throughout the community and the community can hear, hey, these are all the great things. Cause like, we know you're doing great things all the time. And it'd help us.
Quarterly report of what?
Danielle did.
Just.
Danielle did. When Danielle left, it's.
Yeah, that's been a couple of years. Yeah, just what you're going on, the participation and, and, and it's more of like a public outreach.
Yeah.
We'd, we'd really appreciate it.
Don, any questions? You had something the other night that he couldn't answer that.
Are, are you, are you guys happy with where we ended up with getting a full-time SDSU person? And you're happy?
We're getting somebody in now.
You're, you're happy with that?
If the budget goes the way we propose it, we'll be great.
Yeah, I think, I think we're at, what are we at for?
Well, we don't know that.
Yeah, we don't know.
Well, I know. And that's where the misunderstanding on my part was. I thought that's what was going on here. So, that's.
Do you guys better understand the county position, you know, with, with what Jeff said though? I mean, you guys under, understand that we're just, we're not cutting just because it's, you know, it's gonna be pretty serious in a couple of years.
I don't wanna pay any more taxes, but you've got much choice.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
You know?
Yeah.
Stuff like that.
And we're trying to be absolutely as frugal as we possibly can with, with your guys' stuff.
Well, of course, when, when, when you think about it, being a property owner is, is kind of a, kind of a mistake from the standpoint of financial. We're the property holders who don't pay for it all.
Yeah. And, yeah, I mean, this is besides 4-H, but yes, your expense, whatever. I see an opt-out coming, do I want it? No. But that's what's gonna hap, gonna have to happen.
You know, one, one thing that I've heard a lot of lately with all the property tax talk and all that, cutting property taxes and that, is saying, well, people are saying, well, why do I gotta pay property taxes? I own my own house. I gotta still keep paying, making payments on it to keep living in it. Okay? There's, there's funds, there's, there's three or four people sitting in the back row there that, that still have to be paid, whether you own your house or not. The county still has to pay their wages and, and the, for the safety and the, and the, those services. So, really, you're not still making house payments, you're making payments to, to, to survive, basically.
Well, and John, along with that, one of the things that we have to look at is the, is the list of organizations that are not taxed.
Absolutely.
On their property. And what was that?
Two pages long.
Millions of dollars, twenty, thirty millions of dollars not taxed.
When we, when we spoke with Michelle about that, we actually don't know how much valuation is not taxed because she's never, they're never gonna assess and get an accurate value for say like the hospital because it'll never be taxed. But it, it's gotta be over twenty percent of the property in the county is not even taxed.
And they're not even paying property tax.
Usually the biggest one.
It's a tax exempt.
Are you still a township board? So, what would your thought be if we have to go this road? Like a, a, a road and bridge levy that's just dedicated to roads or what?
Well, nothing against Mike, cause we talk a lot, township.
Oh, you can, you can put something against him, that's fine.
The roads in the, in the county suck. You know, and okay, in my personal opinion, like I said, there's nothing with Mike.
Mike, cover your ears for a second.
Keep chip sealing them. The bump doesn't go away. The dump, the bump just gets bigger. I drive truck, I drive in the county roads and you go out.
Randy, I, I, I come from Sweet County, which is a little larger than this, maybe not populated much more. We have one north and south, Assot Road in the county, and, and a half of a east-west one. That's not what we're dealing with here.
No, I mean, it's, you know, it's tough. I mean, we ain't gonna talk about all that. We're opt-out to help fix the roads. The worst part is you're gonna go to get a county vote. And like the other gentleman said, the city's gonna kick us out. They won't pay it. And we get left out. Cause we're the minority.
Betty, how much of an opt-out would we have to have to create four million dollars of revenue?
Four million dollars? I don't know.
And, and those are all things that we're, we can take a look at and see and discuss.
I suppose you would have to have a project or something, or I have, I have no idea. I've never been to an opt-out.
Anyway, that's.
Thank you.
If you had questions for 4-H, I'd try to answer them before you went to your thing. And do that, so. If not.
We're good. All right, thank you guys.
Good luck.
Didn't the, when the guy was here for the juvenile project, which was six million, didn't he say it was like thirty-some dollars a person? Was, isn't that what he said? But that'd be, said be less than that, I would think.
I think it was seventeen dollars.
No.
Per hundred.
We probably.
We'll do the math and come up with it.
We got that information.
Not per person, per hundred thousand.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Dan.
I would move to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion by Wanda, second by Dan to adjourn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We adjourn.
Thank you.
I better be, I talked to you.
I guarantee it.
Don, why don't you email me and I'll get that stuff for if we, oh. You guys all have to decide if you wanted me to get it.
Yeah, I think you should have done that today.